Good evening. And welcome to the regular meeting, February 27th, 2018, regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. I'd like to call this meeting to order. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of our February 13 meeting?
So moved.
Second? Any corrections or amendments?
I had the, just to change Jennifer Shear's name to Jen Hamud, which you've already done. Yeah. And I don't remember. Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Any other suggestions? Okay. All those in favor of the minutes as amended? Okay. That is fine. In favor? Two, perhaps. We have time for public comment. And seeing as we have a public this evening, we're very delighted to see you and to welcome you and to invite your comments. Please approach the microphone.
I'm Victor Britton, and I'm a high school teacher here, as most of you know. I am also a parent of an alumnus of the high school, and I've lived in Rhinebeck for 22 years. I'm also vice president of the RPA, Rhinebeck Teachers Association, and I started here as a substitute in 1993. It's been a great 25 years. We are all facing new challenges. You guys at the board are facing challenges. Staff are facing challenges. Parents of our students are facing challenges and uncertainties, and students indeed are facing evolving challenges every day. I am standing here speaking to you because I believe we are at a crossroads. As we face the uncertainty of an unresolved teacher contract, of a budget under development, as we reexamine our thinking about security and safety in a threatening world, I ask that you, as leaders of this district, openly strive to provide stability in the face of this uncertainty. Rhinebeck teachers stand together in support of our students, our programs, and our colleagues. My colleagues dig deep every day to be there for our growing students, to be there emotionally for them, intellectually for them. We don't know what each day will bring. We don't know if we will need to identify and help a student who feels alone, who feels sick, who feels angry, or simply feels confused about factoring a trinomial. We don't know if it will be a quiet day, or a day where we encounter a child who feels like her life is falling apart, or will it be a day where we have to grab an AED and perform CPR? We know as teachers that is our mission, to help, to support, to challenge, to teach, to act. To be able to do those things, to be able to see when a student isn't themselves, we need to support each other. As a member of this learning community, teachers do spend time supporting not only students, but each other. In order for us to meet our CDEP goals, to make our moonshots, to enhance our students' lives, we need to feel supported by you, the leadership. We are often hearing at opening day or seeing on Twitter that we are a reward school or listed in Newsweek. Those words are great, but stopping in to visit a teacher that has worked really hard on a project, writing a personal note, that means a lot. Asking teachers for input on program changes in a collegial way, that helps. Striving to negotiate a contract that is fair and respectful certainly helps. In order to dig deep on hard days, we need to know that there's something there to dig for. Just like we seek out students that need a hand, I ask that you, as leaders, support our staff. I ask that you remember there's a delicate ecosystem at a school, and as we approach these crossroads, it is crucial that I know and my colleagues know that you have our backs. Why is that important? Parents rightfully want us to have the backs of our pupils. Parents are entrusting us with their everything, with their children. It doesn't get more serious than that. While my colleagues will always try to do what we can to help nurture and protect our students, we are only human. We need to feel safety, support, and appreciation. We are going to be able to better act knowing that you support us. Please approach these challenging times with the empathy and consideration that teachers are expected to display every minute when you're entrusted with Rhinebeck's children. I know that my colleagues and I look forward to collaborative work, cooperatively working, on improving our district with you. Thank you for your partnership and generous devotion to the district. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you very much. Please.
So when I rehearsed this, before I got it in, it was under five minutes, so I think we should be good.
Can you tell us who you are?
So I'm David Anchen. My daughter's Sydney. She's in first grade at CLS. And my little guy Nelson will attend CLS, and my little baby Rosie will also attend CLS. And we're so blessed to be part of such a wonderful nurturing community with strong, committed, loving leadership. I think it's really important for you to hear how real parents and real students feel about what's all going on in the world right now. You do such important work, and you work so hard, and I think that this is data that you need to be able to do your work effectively. Most of my comments are going to be in response to the communication from the superintendent because I think that that is a very good starting point. A lot of the points made in there are great starting points for school security, but I'm concerned that they're not enough. We're really blessed to have very loving greeters, and they give my little girl a smile every morning, and it's a wonderful thing. And these are loving people, but they're not specialists in security. They don't have a law enforcement background. They don't know threat assessment the way that a law enforcement officer would. I'm concerned that we're placing an undue burden on them, having them be the first point of contact for a potential bad guy. It is very easy to argue that, well, they know who's supposed to be there, they know who's not supposed to be there, they're going to be able to pick out the bad guys. But in most of the school shootings, the shooters have been known to the school, so they would get through with no problem. The other thing is sometimes they're sick, and they might not be there, and they might have a substitute there who doesn't know anybody. So that's not really an effective measure. So you could make the argument that maybe a single point of entry is a really effective measure. Nobody can get in through the back. But when we look at the data and see what's actually happened, many school shooters have gone in through windows, or they have guns. It's very easy to break glass with guns. So the single point of entry is maybe also not the most effective measure. And so you could make the argument then that we have an excellent relationship with the police department that supports our work, that keeps our students safe, but let's think about what the police do primarily. They respond to an emergency. That means the emergency is necessarily already in the way. And so let's think about another case of this, banks. I'm sure every bank would say they have a great relationship with the police department, but they still have a safe. And so if it were enough simply to have a good relationship with the police department, you wouldn't need a safe. If it were enough to have a good relationship with the fire department, you wouldn't need smoke detectors, and you wouldn't need fire extinguishers. We have an opportunity. This isn't all bad. We're positioned to become a leader in how to create actually workable solutions to create schools that are safer. In our community, we have colleges with excellent criminal justice and educational programs. It would be easy and free to partner with them, to devise novel creative ways, and study and disseminate these ways of keeping our schools safer. And in that way, Rhinebeck could be a leader. Rhinebeck would be known as the school district that figured it out. It's not all bad. We have so much opportunity here. And as you do your work, the thing that I want to really leave you with is that there's been tremendous suffering. There's been pain, both from people who have been victims and, you know, also for the students that have to figure out how the heck they're going to walk into school with all of this anxiety and fear. But out of all of that difficulty, there is so much opportunity to do incredible things. And that kind of empowerment is what can fuel your work and what can really lead to incredible things that really do justice to what the Rhinebeck School District is. So thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your prepared remarks, and they're very thoughtful, and I'm sure we'll have a lot to respond to, Mr. Britton. Anyone else in the family? We have others here. Would anyone else wish to approach and speak at this time? I do want to thank Mr. Britton for the way in which he framed the challenge that faces the district, all of us working together communally with respect and with concern for our students and for each other. And I think these will in fact be principles we hope to guide all of us as we move through budget season, as you know, it's upon us. So I appreciate the time and the thoughtfulness of articulating that challenge for the board. So let us move on to our principal reports. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here this evening.
Good evening, everyone. So some things happening in Chansworth. As I started before, I'd like to, this year I've decided to give you updates on some of the things we focus on as faculty as a whole, especially our conference days and PD time. This coming week, on the first, we'll be orienting staff on the recently adopted Next Gen Science Standards during our two IRPD on Thursday, actually this week. And then March 7th next week during our monthly faculty conference, we'll be focusing on the school climate survey results, download, and discussion. So I'm sure we'll, it's just the beginning of that conversation. I'm sure we'll start to dictate some agendas for our planning team. Last time we, I was here, I reported that we were just about to start our Olympics, specialist teams, a character ed unit that they spent time developing over the summer. Want to give you some updates. It was a very successful unit. The Olympics unit concluded this past week with a presentation to the students by a local Olympian. Her name's Betsy Armstrong. She was the starting goaltender for the Olympic water polo team in '08 and '12, and she shared not only her experience with her gold medals with the students. So it was very cool to kind of wrap that up with someone real in the community, and it was great. And I want to thank her for spending the time with us that day. In addition, we had an international food festival last week. We had an opportunity, food time, opportunity to try new foods from different parts of the world. They were asked to follow up by completing a taste evaluation and then sharing their findings with their peers. Some examples was a meatloaf recipe from Africa, a cookie recipe from Australia. I wanted to thank Larry Anthony and his crew for going above and beyond and helping the specialist teams organize it. And in addition, the recipe for each item was included, so I took home some of those recipes. They were really great. So it was just a wonderful way to kind of take it outside further as far as the cultural foods and connected to, you know, every student. One of the things I mentioned last time was that we had an opening ceremony where every class was assigned a country. So many of those were represented in the international food tasting. In addition, the classrooms during specialist time focused on music, stories, dance, art, sports, and activities from around the world, reinforcing teamwork, responsibility, sportsmanship, and perseverance. And they also actually, not moving forward, because after each Olympics, there's always the Paralympics, so they actually bridged that, and they taught lessons centered around the Paralympics where students have an opportunity to experience challenges and appreciate differences that people struggle with. So they were able to incorporate some of that, kind of doing that moving forward. I wanted to spend some thank yous first. I wanted to thank on January 29th, we had the dictionary project with grade three and our Rhinebeck Rotary's. I always like to take a moment to thank them. We're great for taking the time to deliver those dictionaries and do some great activities with the third grade, and talk to them about how words wind up in kind of our dictionary and how they're pulled from culture and words like Google outside of what Google actually is, things like that. So we get a chance to do that each year, so I wanted to thank them. Also want to thank Arts and Ed and Sandy Kane for helping to fund and organize our annual Folk Care Leadership, which actually coincided. There was some overlap with our Olympics unit. So the great thing about that was this year, John and Trish Incorporated, some of their work that they do with the third graders, some international songs and dance that coincide with that unit. And then each classroom started to dance that coincide with the country assigned to their classrooms, so we're able to kind of upgrade that direction a little bit this year to coincide with the Olympics. Before I'm asked, I wanted to let you know that I'm waiting, and we should find out on Friday whether or not we won the Dan and Animals and Project for America Back to School Grant Contest. We do have a conference call with them on Thursday. They're actually very interested to hear without, so again, I don't know if we won or anything like that, but it seems like they said they were making calls to several schools very interested in what we did to get the word out. So as I'm going to cross, I will let you know if I shoot out an email as soon as I find out, I promise. So that's one update. Also want to let you know that once again, we submitted a video for the annual New York State App Heard Moving to Your Video Grant Contest, where we have an opportunity to create, we just submitted it today actually, where we created a video about showing students doing, you know, fitness activities and some of the programs that the unit assessments and things that we do within PD. So basically, it's a zoned out contest as far as New York State is concerned. We'll find out where the posting is, so stay tuned. We have an opportunity between the dates of March 9th and March 23rd to take a look at the videos. Each zone has its own contest, and then the winners of that zone become part of the state contest. So we could win up to $2,000 in Flag House, which is one of the equipment companies. We've historically put videos in for this grant and run some version of it as we've gone through, so we're hoping this year up to $2,000 in Flag House equipment. I did want to take a moment to congratulate one of our own students, Bronwyn Dwyer. She was one of our second grade students in Mrs. Yearwood's class. She was one of many, over 1,000 students who put a piece of artwork into a contest titled Color My World. It was for the United Way. So she was someone who submitted. Turned out, over 1,000 students, they had a group of finalists about two weeks ago, go to some, one of the radio stations for iHeartMedia, to be judged literally on air by Sharp Times Daily John, and she won the whole, the entire panel, which is pretty awesome. We found out like two days before the judging that she was a finalist, so I did want to give her a shout out. She was in the Kipsey Journal. Yeah, and it wasn't actually grade specific. It was literally just, here's the winner. And the great thing for Bronwyn was that her submission of an earth that bordered with children of all skin colors and ethnicities holding hands that read, "Happy 80th Birthday, Anyone Can Be Friends," will be featured on the cover of the United Way's 80th Anniversary Celebration of Service program. And she and her family are invited to attend the event at Anthony's Pier 9. So congratulations to her. Very low key, most of us didn't even know she did it, and she might have won. So great job there. Also, just want to let you know, as we speak, PTSO Scholastic Book Fair is happening this week. Our Ice Cream Social begins Thursday night. Some upcoming events, we're going to have our Jump Road for Heart Kickoff Assembly tomorrow morning. It's the first time we've actually done a kickoff assembly. We've literally broken the record in raising money for the American Heart Association through Jump Road for Heart, which a lot of schools, all my young kids do, and their school participate in. So this year's the first time we're going to be doing an assembly where we have actually staff members and a history over to talk about, you know, issues they've had and, you know, specific situations where the American Heart Association has helped us fund procedures and things that they have to go through. So it's just a great way to kind of put a face to some of the fundraising that the kids are always a big part of. So again, hoping to break our record in previous years. March 5th, I just wanted to mention, this Monday night, the Power of Resilience Event at high school, in the high school auditorium. It's between 6:30 and 8:30, focusing on kids and anxiety. There's been some flyers and information around. I want to thank Rhinebeck Science Foundation for assisting the district-wide Health and Wellness Committee in putting that together. So if you can make it, it's going to be great. We have Bonnie St. John, is one of our keynote speakers, who really focuses on kids and anxiety, so it should be a good night. So keep that in mind. And finally, our K registration continues for Fall 2018. It'll go through March 16th. Screening with DNA, right now we have 21 students registered to me. Find out if there's something for next year.
How does that compare to previous years?
At this time, I'm not sure, but it's probably around the same. Usually a couple of weeks in, we get a big rush, and then it kind of lulls, and then we get more. So I would say last year, by mid-March, we had somewhere in the like high 30s, 40 maybe, something like that. I remember just because usually we talk about it at the wear shop. We might get to that point in the next two weeks. The 21 so far. Lot of girls, girl hat so far.
Thank you. Does anyone have a question or a comment for Mr. Kane? Fantastic. We've got our fingers crossed for you for the, that was a total effort.
And well, this community, I've got to admit, and that's one of the things they're going to hear us talk to them on Thursday, that that's a huge part, if we are successful. Thanks, and stay tuned.
Good evening. I want to start this evening's report just by following up on something that I shared with you last time I spoke to you, and that's the BMS students that participated in the science fair. As you know, BMS students, for what I believe this was the third annual, have been collaborating, Skogul in eighth grade has been collaborating with a teacher of Lyndon Avenue Middle School and, and for the past three years, they've put a science fair on. You know, in addition to students having an opportunity to have their work and their original research judged by a panel of judges, they also had the opportunity to sit for a presentation by Dr. Arsenique Kacollan, who was an assistant professor of biology up there, who spoke about mapping neurological disorders with the hopes of being able to eventually pinpoint genetic causes. Very heavy sounding subject for a Saturday morning, but we had a very interested group of BMS students there for that presentation. This year, again, as I said, it was our third year. At this point, you know, we draw from our eighth grade population. Lyndon Avenue Middle School has opened their fair up to sixth through eighth grade students, and we have as many entrants in this year's fair as they did. So your, you know, the numbers have grown each of the three years that we've done this science fair, and we hope that they continue. And Skogul is very excited to open this up to sixth and seventh grade students from both the middle school next year, as well as sort of eighth graders. Last week, and after hiatus for a couple of years, PTSO held a BMS Scholastic Book Fair. The three-day sale generated $1,917 in sales, which equated to us earning $767 worth of books that were then donated back to classrooms and building libraries, back to the school. And I really want to say thank you to Sarah Hutchings, who organized, almost single-handedly organized, and manned the table, set up, wrote down each day. So I very appreciate her efforts. And last Friday, BMS held its annual winter dance. This year, the Student Council leadership voted to make this a fundraiser for the Dutchess County SPCA and to donate an iPad, which they then raffled off, trading raffle tickets for donated items. In a two-hour dance setting, we generated 750 donated items from our students. So Mr. Weisenthal and I had the pleasure of loading up two trucks and delivering it to the SPCA yesterday afternoon, and, you know, to see their faces light up and take a walk through the center and see all of the animals. It was kind of helpless, was a truly uplifting and something we intend to do on a yearly basis right now. Last evening, we held our ninth annual Top Chef competition. Hardly believed it was our ninth annual. This activity was started years ago as a BLPT initiative, just to encourage kids to get into the kitchen, to start reading labels, to think about nutrition, to think about portion size, and for those students who love to cook, love to bake, or had an interest in either to get together and share their love, their love of their hobby. It's quickly become a student favorite. This year, we packed the bleachers. I don't know if we had more groups of students that were presenting. I don't know if more friends, family members attended with them, but the entire one side of the bleachers and the BMS general pack. We had 28 entrants, up to 19 last year. Once again, our students' culinary talents were judged by a number of faculty members, along with local chefs, and we really would like to reach out and thank the chefs who joined us from some of the local restaurants. So many thanks to Josh Cronor of Terrabin. He's judged this event all nine years. Ryan Viatour of Bunz Burgers, Maya Kamal of Kamal Fine Food, Jeremy Monaco of Rhinebeck Bagels, and Westire from the local. So we thank all of them. Again, after a one-year hiatus, Health and Wellness Day is back in the middle school. Do recall that our goal is to cycle over the course of five years, Health and Wellness Day with Art is National Day and Career Day. It's been very difficult in the past several years to develop a presenticle, and this is really something we can't do without our parent and community members. The goal of the day is to partner with our parent and community members to expose students to a variety of new activities. Again, thinking about careers, potential careers in the future, but really the focus of Health and Wellness Day is just exposing them to new activities and giving them the knowledge to make healthier lifestyle choices in the future. Students are going to cycle through a number of wellness presentations where they'll learn about careers and such things as nutrition, mental health, ophthalmology, orthodynamics, amongst many others, and through slightly, several slightly longer fitness presentations where they will learn about and have an opportunity to participate in Pilates, martial arts, Zumba dance, CrossFit, hands-only CPR, among, again, many others. This year's keynote speaker will be Kyle Keaton, owner of Kings of Fitness at Jim Devon and Rogers. He does a lot of work with adolescent nutrition and conditioning and fitness, so we're excited to have him join us this year. A few things upcoming in the month of March. Coming in March, seventh grade ELA students will begin their ever-popular literature unit titled The Outsiders. We'll leave their teachers here this evening. Students will select from six titles and examine common themes of bullying and social isolation through student facilitated discussions in literature circles. This is an activity that Ms. Abel started several years ago. It's proven to be a very valuable experience. The students explore difficult issues through literature, but look for connections and real-life experiences in their own lives. As I know I've spoken about many times in the past, BMS continues to look for opportunities to integrate middle school students with elementary school students. To this end, plans are underway for members of the leadership club to work with CLS fourth graders in late May, early April, teaching them about the takeover in Netherlands by the English forces in 1664 as part of their Dutch history. So we look forward to that. Thanks to a grant from the PTSO and sponsored by the Peer Leadership Club, plans are underway to provide students with an opportunity to participate in a six-week-long activity during which they can learn about improvisational acting. Recall for many years, seventh grade students have been working with television film, Tony Ward nominated Broadway actress, Denny Dillon, as they pointed out, the Samuel Witch Trial through reenactment. This has always been a favorite activity, a favorite activity of seventh grade students, particularly this year. It was, I'd say, even more boisterous and more animated. So as Denny and I started to talk, we thought about putting together some sort of after-school activity where we could invite not only the seventh graders to work a little bit more with him and with her, but invite sixth and eighth grade students to work with her as well. Eighth grade students know where they're working with her last year. Sixth grade students will have an opportunity to get to meet her and work with her prior to next year, Samuel Witch Trials. The after-school club is going to be, as I said, open to students, six to eight, begin either late March, early April, and run for approximately six weeks with some sort of performance for parents at the end. And finally, as a sure sign that winter is nearing its end and spring is approaching, modified towards being just two weeks.
Can you, Mr. Kane, answer any questions or comments? Excuse me, I'm just coughing, I'm a little sick. Questions or comments?
Thank you. I will add, in my halting voice of coughing, how wonderful it is to hear that traditions that have been in place at the middle school now for a number of years are being sustained through community involvement. And it isn't always easy for, through the building level planning team and outreach to bring these groups of people together every year, and it really is so valuable for students. I'm glad it's working.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. As usual, I'd like to begin by briefing you on some BLPT news. Our most recent day of service took place on February 24th at the Star Library, thanks to the support of Brooks Stevens and BLPT member Jill Horn for organizing and facilitating this opportunity. We had about a dozen of our students spend time cataloguing, resheling library materials at the Star Library. We plan to sponsor a third day of service in the spring, and as you recall, the pilot was putting in places to have a day of service available to our students, particularly ninth and 10th graders, finding it more difficult to get these opportunities. We want to have one each athletic season for lack of a better term. So we're looking forward to increasing participation in May, and we're looking forward to next year. In addition, the BLPT is working on a climate initiative, and I'm going to be coy, I'm going to say that going to say that, that I can't tell you anymore because it's a secret. We don't want students to know what we're doing. So, I look forward to recording more as more details become available. In academic updates, as you know, students in our English 12 classes completed their research projects entitled Passion Project. Last month, four students whose projects were selected presented a first annual hot talk to their peers. I've asked Mr. Davenport for the link to you, so you can see for yourself.
Right.
What I saw, and what my colleagues saw. Each of these students presented a lecture to their peers modeling on a TED Talk. Each student for about 15 to 20 minutes, without notes and without reading their papers, spoke at length and great detail to their peers about the topic they had researched and about the topics they, they focused strongly about. So, this, I thought, was tremendously impressive work for all of our students, among all of our students, and we look forward to its continuation in the future. I want to point out that the next few paragraphs that appear from me appear within quotation marks. "In February, Ms. Aythel, a long-term lever replacement teacher, as well as a fearless mariner, spoke to a sold-out crowd at the Hudson River Maritime Museum. She delivered a lecture entitled Kingston to Kingston Around Cape Horn in 375 Days, which detailed her and her fiance's recent circumnavigation of South America. The tale of everyone's favorite ancient mariner recently left its mark on students in Ms. Green's English 10 class. Now that they've finished reading Mary Shelley's Frankenstein, they're in the process of drafting literary arguments, working collaboratively as peer evaluators, and receiving feedback from Ms. Green via Google Classroom. In facing what most people fear more than death itself, students in Ms. Green's public speaking course wrapped up a unit on effective interviewing skills. They took part in mock interviews, taking turns asking and answering questions, their workshop resumes, cover letters. Learning the key role of watchdog journalism plays in democracy, students in Ms. Green's journalism class have begun a unit investigating a topic of their choice. After conducting research in local and national news sources, as well as interviewing and surveying members of our school community, they'll synthesize the skills they've acquired so far and present their findings in editorials, features, and news stories." End quote. Now, back to the prosaic, my right. In, in the math department, our colleague, Mrs. B., has written a successful grant to the Mid-Hudson Teacher Center to conduct a book study on the researcher, Rick Formelli's latest edition of his book. It's entitled Fair Isn't Always Equal: Assessment and Grading in a Differentiated Classroom. This book study group is part of the, our math department's investigation into standards-based grading, which I've mentioned in other reports, and which, as you recall, focuses on master learning, understanding and learning, rather than high stakes, one-and-done tests and standard-ass tests. So, within that philosophy, the question is, so how do we grade students fairly actively? And in that book, Dr. Formelli addresses those questions. So, we're hopeful that a number of our colleagues will work with Mrs. B. in that book study group, and I look forward to sharing with you her insights and her findings. In addition, for the rest of this week, Mrs. B. will be at a Texas Instruments International Conference in Texas. This year, she's qualified as a T3 regional instructor. And having received this qualification, Texas Instruments will pay for these instructors to attend this conference and learn about how their technology, particularly graphing calculators, facilitate learning, help students master difficult concepts and entertain these concepts. So, we're looking forward to all the knowledge that Mrs. B. will bring back with her to share with our colleagues in the math department. In the computer science principles class, students are using the language Python to edit photographs, so that's where they are in the classroom. In the science department, Mr. Rocko has completed, I've heard me speak on several occasions, the Augmented Reality Sandbox, which is used to engage students in the study of erosion, hydrology, volcanology. At our last maintenance conference day, I had a chance of my requesting a demonstration for Mr. Rocko, some of my colleagues joining me, to see the Augmented Reality Sandbox in action. I don't have the scientific vocabulary to describe it, but I can say it's pretty cool. And the students are really looking to rock, really looking forward to getting their hands on it, and they literally will get their hands on it and in it, to model different geologic processes. So, our thanks to Mr. Rocko for making that happen. This week, the science department will be meeting with, Mr. King mentioned this, with Ms. Raco from DC Bosse's, to learn more about the next generation of science standards. In the music department, we held an in-school choral concert on February 6th. Due to a scheduling conflict in Snafu, I was not able to attend the entire concert. The reports I received is that our students performed well, and our student audience were engaged and respectful. And as usual, as I've been told many times, things go better when I'm not around. So, I'm glad to report on that. In our band department, our band students are taking part in something called March Mania. You can Google that if you're interested. March Mania is modeled on the NCAA basketball tournament, sponsored by the United States Marine Band. And rather than basketball teams competing, different marches are voted on as to be superior. So, if you start with 32 marches, you can vote and you can select the, the best march of the field. And if you select yourself the, the march that everyone else has selected as the best march, apparently you are, March came for a day. That selection will be made on March 20th. So, it's a great opportunity for our instrumental students to learn about editorializing and neglecting musical show. It deserves more attention. In the co-curricular realm, Model UN held a conference on Saturday that were joined by Gretel's students. Our art club has been working on a new painting to grace the high school cafeteria. The current artwork, when our new artwork is, is completed, the current artwork will be removed and conserved, then hung in another part of the school once our capital projects have been completed. The GSA supported again this year the disturbance of no-name, no-name calling week in January, and will continue to work on making every week a no-name calling week. The newspaper club released its third issue of Ryan Beck Reality, and also had an extra edition created for Valentine's Day. The sophomore class, several weeks ago, sponsored a winter carnival for CLS students, thanks to Mr. King for, for his support, where we had a number of high school students supervised by some of our faculty organize and facilitate games and activities for their younger peers. It was a great success, and the sophomore class would like to continue that next year as a junior class. And looking ahead, on, on March 5th, pitchers and catchers report, as well as rowers, track athletes, cross athletes, and tennis athletes. So, that's the start of our, our spring season.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. Do you have people have questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we are prepared for, now for our budget development update. Thank you, everyone, for coming. It's good to see you all.
Just wondering why. Thank you.
Everybody brought their budget.
I brought my budget by paper.
Did you three hold prices?
I brought this year's and last year's.
I'm suing.
I know, you're, you sound a little foggy.
I was really afraid. I'm very afraid this is going to happen.
I wish, I wish I had a law.
Driving around with it?
Yeah.
Reading at stoplights?
Yeah.
No, it's actually in the car.
My budget, mine.
Dog ate my budget.
Too embarrassed, and what's going on happening?
You're not alone.
Yeah, but I have no excuse.
Okay, so, got draft three in front of us. So, on the first, at the top there, what I did is I'll go through the changes that have occurred. Of course, the first part was from the last meeting, and during the last meeting, we were able to reduce the budget by $386,000. This particular draft reduces the budget another $335,000. So, it's going in the right direction, but we'll go through some things, so. So, if you go to page number two, towards the very bottom, deletions to the second draft budget at today's meeting. So, let me go through, there's not a whole lot of changes, but there's some big numbers behind some of them. The admin charges for Bosse's has actually gone down, which is very nice, $5,000. Teacher in grade seven, eighth middle school, this is Nancy Abel's position, English position. During the last reiteration of the budget, we reduced it, just took the breakage as if we were hiring somebody for that particular position. It was determined between the high school and middle school principal that they're, it could absorb by not hiring somebody to that. They got to move some, some assignments around, but they believe it's very doable to eliminate that. As you know, last year, that was one of our recommendations, to eliminate English positions. Because of the passage of the override last year, we're able to keep it in the budget. But this year, taking a look at the classes and enrollment numbers, they believe that it's very doable to do without replacing, which will have an effect, there's no doubt about it, but I think it's one that they can absorb. As we turn over to the second page, we have a teacher aid that's coming out of the budget during the IEP process that's occurred so far. One of the students is, is, is not requiring a teacher aid for her for next year, so we've eliminated. Just to let you know, the IEP process is still ongoing, so it is possible there could be more cuts. Again, also during this process, there could be additions, so I just want to warn you about that. So, Ms. Davidson is into her IEPs, but nowhere near complete yet, and we'll talk about something a little bit, which is actually the next one. And that's Bosse Services. Through this process, we, one child is coming back to our school, okay, who is currently in a Bosse's placement. And we have one child today who actually registered, or de-enrolled himself here and is now enrolled in another school district. His parents, yeah, not the student itself, but the parents enrolled in another, they moved to another school.
They've moved.
Yes. So, that money was taken out of the budget, too. As a result of the, of the English position and the teacher aid position, we were able to reduce some of the benefits for the retirement systems, social security, and the union welfare benefits. Those are all a direct, in relation to those particular positions. And on top of that, we were able to reduce also because of those two positions, about $36,000 for health insurance. That leaves a $110,000 decrease that was due to having the current health insurance budget at 10%. I've had, last week, we had a de-hit meeting, and it's not going to be above 8%. It could be lower, but it will not be above 8. So, we are meeting next Wednesday before our budget workshop, and we will have final rates there. The only possibility that we would have final rates is for some reason, schools got canceled because of weather and we did not need to set that rate. If for some reason that's going to happen, it would be probably put off a week. Final rate would be set. Yeah, that's when it's supposed to be. So, I don't see, unless there's a weather event that makes us not meet, we shall have a final number for that. So, remember, about every 1% lowering is about $55,000 or so. Can we go from 8% to 7%? That's what I hope, and another $55,000. But I don't see it going too much lower, because what they're trying to do, and what they've looked at is, over the past 15 years of history, the average has been 7%. It's just unfortunately been 2, a 4, a 3, a 5, and then a 16. And that's what we want to avoid. So, we're kind of looking at it where we want to set it at 7 or 8% and just, that's the way it is going forward, and so that we don't go through what we had to go through last year with that tremendous increase to the health insurance. But so far, the program's looking much better this year. Don't know if there'll be a holiday next year, and that is not determined until June. So, it's after the fact.
So, Tom, this number, less the, the retirement and the teacher aid, represents an 8% line for health.
Yes, yes, we're at 8% now for the health insurance. So, altogether, it's a deduction of $335,310, which is 3.27% budget to budget. So, 3.27, not too bad, but it's still generating a 4.5% tax levy increase. And of course, our allowable percentage is 2.51, so we're about 2% over where we need to be, which is almost $556,000. We'd still be looking to get out of the budget to bring it down to the tax cap. Questions?
So, just to recap, we moved from a gap initially of, was our original gap 891, or is that, was that already adjusted?
That was already adjusted.
That was already adjusted.
Our first, our first one was 1.25.
1.2, okay.
So, we've cut it more than in half, but there's not too many. As I, as I look at it, there are three things that are still in play. We have the health insurance rate. Next week, I will know what our Career Technical Institute enrollment will be for the following year. I have no idea where that's going as far as that's concerned. I have, I think, 30 in my enrollment right now, so I don't really know what that will be. Last week, we had a big increase in the numbers for that junior class, which will be seniors next year, but every class is distinct an individual from the previous one. So, for all I know, there could be five kids, or there could be 20 kids. Really, at this moment, until the guidance counselors speak with Dr. Davenport to tell me what the numbers are, I couldn't tell you if it's going to be up, down, or, or remain the same. Shouldn't have done that by the end of this week. Yeah, yeah, we're, I, I will know before the budget workshop. Take those into consideration. The third thing is the IEP process.
Right.
That we're in. Emily is pretty confident that she thinks she will have two kids coming back from one of their placements out of district to come on to become a part of the self-contained classroom, which will now be in the fourth grade next year. So, she's hoping, she's going to recommend that, but until it's done and the parents agree to it, I'm not going to get it out of the budget. But if it's, if it does happen, for those two kids, it'll be about $100,000. Maybe a little more, I have to take a look to see what maybe related services they may have been getting. It's not that they lose the related services, it'll just be provided by our own personnel and not at an additional cost. The only other place could be moving is on the revenue side, the state aid, but I don't, I don't really see that moving too much. And there's a lot of pressure now to move those monies to other things like security issues and things of that nature. So, any new monies that come available may be put towards that, and may have restrictions as to what they can use for. So, that's, that's one part of it. So, that, those are the possible moving parts we still have. We did meet today an admin council to, to go over list of all the non-managed possible cuts, so that's still being developed. We're getting a lot closer to having that completed, plus, and putting together We're getting a lot closer to having that completed, plus in putting together a process to bring to you what we think would be the right cuts to be made to get down to the tax cap.
We anticipate that it'll probably look a lot like the list we were working off last year, when the board ultimately decided to go for, for an override. You'll recall, we had developed a list of possible reductions to the, to the budget, and we're kind of working off that, updating it in a number of places. We're looking at some of the other retirements to see if there are ways that we can either reduce the full-time equivalent of what we hire to replace that person, and this is both in the teacher side and instructional side. So we're looking at all retirements as the board has asked us to do, to see if there may be any savings there. But we haven't made any decision or recommendation on that. We're working on it currently, and we should get something to you early this coming week, at least ideas, and then we'll have to, we'll have to put all these pieces together and see.
Yeah, just to remember, there's, there are some things on that list from last year that have already been taken out of this budget.
Right.
So just be aware of it. You know, that list may have been, I can, I don't remember, $400,000 last year, but it's, it's definitely less than that.
It's 500.
Well, there's a couple different versions, yeah, I mean, there's the original 572 or something like that, but then towards when we got to, before I went for the override, it was down to a cut list of like $350,000, I think it got to $242, actually, and that's what we put up for the override.
Since we don't have an actual board meeting before our work session, are we going to get this list of potentials, when, early next week, but are we going to get it and not have a time to discuss it all together before the work session?
Well, since we're not meeting again before the work session, unless we have a special meeting, that'd be up to the board.
Actually, let me ask a follow-up question, because we have an opportunity next week in our coffee with the board sessions, right, in the morning and evening, and we had some thought that we may even extend the length of the time of the morning conversation, if that works for all members of the board, or at least enough of us to be present for maybe a differentiated discussion. And we had also talked about having a bunch of documents available for that conversation. Would those documents be that, what we're looking at now, and would we have any other information from those conversations?
It would be the most recent version of this.
Yeah, definitely. More than likely, we will not have additional cuts from any of the areas that are still in play here.
There'll be a fourth draft at the work session.
At the work session. And I think this is a good moment, just to reiterate, we spoke about this in our last board meeting, that the event that takes place on March 10th, here in this space, is an open work session, where all of our administrators come and speak with us about possible amendments or changes made to the budget. We have this list of kind of tiered potential cuts to discuss and go through, and that there's a moment for public comment in that work session, but it really isn't, questions were raised last year, and I think they were very good questions about, what do we mean when we call it workshop, that suggests something a little more dynamic and interactive? So we want to be very clear that that meeting on the 10th, it's an open work session, all members of the public are invited to come and give input and to observe, but it won't really be a kind of interactive experience. So one of the reasons we wanted to have coffee with the board was to have the potential for real conversation with those who wish to offer suggestions or raise questions with all of us. So I think my thought or question is, how can we make those as productive conversations as possible? How can we share enough information for those conversations? I'm sorry.
No, that's quite right. Would you be at those coffee?
I could definitely be at the morning one. The night when I have a conflict, I'll try to work around, try to work around.
Which would be great, because I'm sure there are going to be some very specific questions.
Sometimes it could be a hindrance, too.
Other thoughts about the format for these coffee conversations?
I think it would be good if we had some structure mined ahead of time, but I don't know if you want to tease out some possible structure that we, just in case nobody, in case we don't have tons of people who come with planned discussion, so that we can do a little bit of a presentation first, and then they have something to respond to. But I don't know if, yeah.
Well, we've, we've tried to make these conversational.
Yeah.
And not presentational, and that's been the concept, that we're not there to give a present, this isn't like a hearing.
Yeah.
It's talk to us about things that you want to see in the budget, things that you wouldn't want to see cut from the budget, getting that kind of feedback. A presentation kind of puts it in a different, in a different place. It's up to the board, but that's, right now, that's not how I'm going into that. But if the board wants to do that, that changes the game plan some, but we can, I mean, we can flex with that if we need to.
Right. I guess I'm just thinking, you know, where I was last year, what I would have wanted as a parent coming in, I would want to see, okay, can somebody explain to me the documentation that's, they'll, you know, what's on the table right now? And then I can give my comments, but if I'm just giving my comments without understanding the context of what's really on the table for being cut, it's not as meaningful. My two cents.
I mean, can't assume everyone hears that this conversation will have been following the unfolding of the budget over the last several meetings, as much as we like to.
And you might get surprised, it might be about security. You could have somebody there, I want to discuss security.
Yes.
You never know where, you know, they're going to go as far as the people who come and why they're there, and what really they're there to find out about, or even voice their opinion about. It could be on subjects here we have in the budget, or it can be all sorts of number of things. It's, you know, a meet and greet, as you know, and usually you have to go with the flow and figure out where it is, so, but I think we can put something together to be able to, I don't say presentation-wise, but if there's enough people there who need explanations, I can definitely at least take those people and say, I'll present to them while you can consider other things. I mean, you can probably break that meeting down into if they're really concerned about budget, okay, let's go to this corner while everybody else talks about other things outside of the budget.
Sure.
Even some people, they talk about the budget as, they don't want to know anything about.
I just think we ought to realize that it's a pretty heavy lift to explain what's happened thus far to somebody who has no information about, about what has happened thus far, and then have a conversation about it, and do that in an hour. I mean, it's just, it's just a lot to cover. That's something that somebody might walk away from the board budget work session on Saturday, if they attend and sit there for the entire three hours or whatever of that, assuming they had no prior knowledge, they might walk away from that saying, okay, I understand better what went into this, I understand what they're proposing to cut, I understand what they've already cut and why. But again, that's, that's three hours of, so I'm just a little concerned about over, overcommitting what is a very short period of time to do more than we really could reasonably do.
Yeah, just to follow up, that, that's fair, and that makes sense. Do, have we ever done something after the board work session, workshop, to give people who now have more of an understanding, to give them venue?
You mean like coming to a board meeting and speaking to the topic? Yeah.
I guess, I guess just, just to express that, to put it, to invite people, let people know, you know.
I think we should do that.
Yeah.
I think we're those who come to the workshop, we should really invite.
Say, they ask the district, you know, if you want to submit comments, or send us emails, or, you know, certainly come to board meetings.
Yeah, I mean, certainly Saturday will not be the last one we discuss.
But just rather than let people feel like.
Yeah. No, that's, that's fair.
Just in terms of the coffee, it, because we're billing it as a coffee to come discuss with us your thoughts about the budget, and that's sort of the overarching theme, whether they come to talk about other things or not, because that, that's of course appropriate, too. It might be helpful to be able to talk a little bit about the philosophy of what we're trying to achieve in the budget, so that people know that we're not just looking at a number and saying, oh, well, this one looks high, let's just cut that. You know, maybe trying to put it in a little bit of a context, so that people understand, you know, this, the retirement, we're trying to find ways, rather than letting faculty go, to find ways to fill the space a little bit, given that we don't need to teach quite as many sections. I think that's helpful for the community to hear, so it doesn't look like we're just going through and slashing and burning, and not really thinking about the consequences of these choices that we're being faced with.
Articulating those guiding.
Principles, yeah. Might be helpful.
That certainly wouldn't take more than five minutes to lay that out.
Exactly.
That's not a budget presentation, that's kind of an overview. Also, we, and we can send, and probably should, you know, send out a reminder, reminder, early this coming week, or at the end of this week, and direct people to the fact that all these documents are and will be posted on the website. So if you haven't come to a board meeting, or seen anything on the YouTube recording, or you want to just find out, so what's in that, we can direct people to that, so they don't have to show up on Tuesday with no, you know, stone comb in terms of what's in here. It's all here, and it's there by draft, so you can, again, if you were so inclined, you could follow all of those documents right up to where we are tonight. These will be posted on the website tomorrow. I don't post them on the website prior to your seeing these, but once we do, then they're, then we put them up there, and we can kind of direct people to, if you want to see the chronology of what has been done thus far, here's the link to the, to that section of the website, feel free to, and if you have questions, you know, call or email.
And we'll have some in hard copy there as well.
Yeah, we can, yeah, and yeah, we can, we would have, I think, the most recent stuff.
Yes, sir.
I think another thing we need to probably get out to the community, too, is to let them, remind them about the budget info at Rhinebeck CSD.
Yes.
So if you do have a question, you can submit it to budget info, and that will go to myself, Adrian Ure, and Joe, so we'll be able to respond if they do have a question or at least, or a comment, whatever it may be, but at least, you know, there is an avenue to contact us, or you can always go to the website and, you know, ask the board or whatever, go that way also, but just as a reminder to them that there is, there is an email address if they do have questions about the budget.
So while we're on the topic, I'd like to bring up a question that I was going to save for later, but since some of the representatives of our teachers' association are here, do we want to add those additional coffee hour sessions so that teachers who want to attend? And we, we had a few inquiries, not a lot, but a couple of inquiries about, you know, the times for the coffees aren't convenient for me, or it's when I'm teaching, and I sent an email out to all the board members today saying, if people, if you, the volunteers who are giving up your time, can be there or want to be there, we could add like a 7:15 to 8 o'clock session at, in this Philly, at the middle school, high school, and then we could go over to chancellor and run a, you know, an 8:15 to 9 o'clock session or thereabouts for chancellor teachers who, and other staff who might be interested, and then at 9 o'clock, now we're into the kind of the, the original coffee hour chunk of time.
Right.
But we shouldn't do that, and I know not every board member can be there, and I understand that, but there needs to be, some of you need to be there. Kind of defeats the purpose of having a conversation with the board on a topic if, if it's just me and Tom.
So we're missing two of our members.
But I am, I am happy to be at the early sessions, I would be happy to hear what the faculty have to say.
And I think Liz said she would.
I can definitely be there as well, so that means we have at least.
I could be there before 8 o'clock.
Before 8 o'clock, okay.
Sounds like critical mass.
Sounds good.
So then I will.
For 7:15, 7:10.
So then, yeah, just sort of understand, I can, we can put something out to the faculty and staff tomorrow morning saying, we've added some additional coffee hour time, let the board join us if you're interested in it. If they are, great, and if they're not, then they will show up.
And, you know.
We'll have the opportunity.
In long-range planning, the group of people who've been having those conversations over here, we, actually, I'm so happy that someone did reach out and ask about increasing the length of that session, because we had been talking about, how can we have a good conversation with faculty? So it's, it's fortunate.
Okay, so we'll do that.
So any other questions or comments on budget update?
I have more.
Oh, you have more?
There's more.
I was thinking, you gave us a lot of paper you have not yet missed out.
This year, this, that part of it, this draft is over, but I did have something come up yesterday that should be discussed, and it happens to do with our current building project and the financing.
No, you don't even know.
We shouldn't panic yet, is that what you're saying?
I was going to say that till later.
No, no, that's a different one, that's a different one, that's a different budget with this. So this is, this is, did you see, this is hole punched.
Okay, which section does it go?
Debt service.
Debt service. Debt service, thank you.
Debt service, okay? All right. I met with Jason yesterday, who works for Bernie Donigan, who is our financial consultant for our building project. They helped us refinance our bonds a few years ago, real good group. So I met with him yesterday with Christine, and we went over to make sure what was in our budget for this year, and what we have in the budget is the serial bonds, principal and interest, you see that, 1.15 million, and the interest of 491,000. And if we go a little bit further down, the energy performance contract, 187, and the 10,209, those have been in the budget from the beginning, which is great. But he did bring this to my attention, is we did go out and borrow last year a bond note of, can't remember, about 1.2 million, I think it was, for this particular project. So at the end of this year, we got to pay it back, but we reissue another bond, but you have to start paying off some of that bond. And he told, and so we talked a little bit about the financing and how that would work. And so he indicated that, you know, what he thinks is the best way for us to do this, because he would like us to bring on this debt little by little, as opposed to waiting to the year in which their first due, and just bam, you get hit bad. He would like to see us bring on like a third of it, a third of it, and then go to the full thing. So his idea, and I tempered him a little bit, because he was looking like $360,000, and I said, that's out of the question. So he says, you know, what should we really do? And because I says, and the other thing, too, will come up later on, about how much money we need to borrow for the next one, because he was not only thinking about this initial borrowing, but we were then to get, borrow the rest of that money in a band for the capital project, but we'll be doing it in chunks of money instead of getting it all upfront. So he highly recommended that we
So he highly recommended that we put $200,000 into the debt service to start paying off our debt for the capital project here. Now, while this adds to the budget, it does not add to the tax cap. Okay, so this in no way creates an additional amount of money we need to cut out of the budget. The voters authorized to make payments because they voted yes on the capital project. Therefore, those monies are already outside of the tax cap. We highly, highly recommend it, we do at least 200,000. That would equate to a point seven added to the taxes. But it does not affect our tax cap. It will increase it, but it's offset by the $200,000. So in talking with him and with Christine, it really is a good way of doing it, to tell you the truth, if we do it two years in a row, doing 200,000, then an additional 200,000, because in the end, the number's going to be 700,000. It's really what the average is going to be over the 15 years. So his recommendation is to do 200, an additional 200, and then 300. Some school districts ignore this, and they wait until it's done, and they hit them with all 700,000 in that one year. And sometimes, sometimes a little bit more than that, because you got to make up for what you haven't done in the past couple of years by starting to pay off that debt. It made a lot of sense. He says, this is what he's kind of recommending to all school districts who do this, because a lot of times what's happening is, is you get to that year when you put that debt on, and you already have other budgetary issues, which really just compounds the whole thing, which makes it look really bad. So his thing would be a third, a third, a third. I was saying 200, 400, 700, you know, 200, 200, 300. Would be, I think, a little more palatable for the community, as opposed to just lumping it all at once. To me, it makes a lot of sense after talking to him about it. Christine, thinking about it overnight, we discussed it again today, and we agree that's probably the best thing to do. Of course, increases it, so like right now, we're at 2.51. I think I calculated it was about 3.22 would come out to be as the tax levy, 3.22. But we just need a simple majority. So, I mean, it really is ultimate to you, what you want to do, but I would highly recommend this. Because at first I was like, no way, but then when he explained to me exactly what would happen over the next couple of years, it made more sense to do a little pain, a little pain, a little pain, as opposed to nothing, nothing, and then just a giant pain that comes in that final year. Because in reality, you get to that final year, that increase is going to be about 2.25. That's, that's, that's a big increase, so if you're just at the tax of two, if the tax gap was two, you're really going out with well over a four, with nothing to show, well, I don't want to say nothing to show for it, you'll have $12 million worth of repairs done to this, this building, so.
So the project would be more or less completed, visible to the community at the point they felt that.
Well, to the extent that.
That it wasn't invisible. They can see it, exactly, yeah.
So a decision does not need to be made today. I am putting in our tax cap formula to them, but I can always go back to adjust that. So that's not an issue. I have time to go back to adjust. I have to put a preliminary one in tomorrow, but I do have time to go back in to make, revise that. There's a drop dead date later on, but tomorrow is the preliminary gets put in place. I'll put it just as we have it here, the 2.51. You have time to think about it. I know we have finance committee on this Thursday.
Yeah.
I believe so.
I didn't know whether or not if, not even, I'm not sure, if next Thursday would be better. Just because we're that much closer to the work session, more stuff will become available, gives us a whole nother week to think about these things.
What do you say, moving the finance committee meeting to next week?
To next Thursday.
To next Thursday.
I'm not even sure if I'm available, it's just something I thought of right now. What's that?
You got to be there, Tom.
No, I know.
Lying by the seat of pants.
I have to be there, let me just make sure.
I guess I think finance has to really dig into this.
We have that lunch meeting on the eighth with pine planes, but we'll be done, should be done around then.
Yeah, so that's March.
March 8th. So think about it. I know Steve is on the committee too, so I don't know what his availability, Mark, I don't know what your availability, I know you've been away.
I should be available.
On the eighth.
Yeah.
I'm okay.
You're okay?
Yeah, yeah.
If I can see if Steve can be available, I think it would be more helpful, because basically by that time, all the documents will be done for the work session.
Yes.
And we can make discussions, make any modifications we need to before then. Plus it gives us a whole nother week to think about this debt service thing.
That's good.
I don't know, Joe, are you available?
Yeah, it's, it's just working around that other meeting.
Yeah, we, we may need to make it about 1:30.
Okay. I just have.
Play with it a little bit, because we're putting ten pounds of five pound bag on a particular day, so it's kind of overflowing already. But we might have to flex the start time a little bit.
Okay.
But it wouldn't need to be a long meeting. It doesn't need to be an hour and a half. I think it's really just making sure we're prepped for, for, for Saturday. And to get feedback, because you'll have the, the list of potentials already, if we can get some feedback, we can modify things before we actually go public and live it all.
Okay.
That's just stay tuned, we'll find out about Steve's.
Yeah, they have invited about Steve.
Okay.
Is that it? Is that everything?
That's it, that's it, that's me, I'm done, I'm sorry.
Boarding committee reports, you don't have too many, you've got finance.
Finance and two long range plans.
Did we get the second long range plan? Is that in here?
Should be in there. 4.3.3.
I didn't get one, but I can.
We can always carry it over to the next week, next meeting.
I can read it off my phone too, that's fine.
4.3.3. Okay, so I guess we can give it to you.
Okay.
It, it was late breeding, late breaking yesterday.
I don't know where we're going to start, but don't worry about it. All right, so let's start in. Finance.
Okay. That's me.
It is.
So the finance committee meeting. Let's see, we did 2017, 2018 estimated expenditure and fund balance. Document reviewing our expenditures to date for some estimations to finish out the school year in order to help project for the coming 2018, 18, 19 budget year. Negatives equal overspend, positives equal the underspend. 2018, 19 non-mandated list of potential cuts. This document listing expenses that we have in our budget that are not required by the state of New York. This list is sorted by building. Tier A, non-personnel, tier B, salaries, but not their main job, clubs, sports, stipends, department chairs, et cetera. Tier C, actual jobs. The action is for the committee reviewing these costs and to send Tom a list of questions, potential eliminations. We were going to go over the forecast five presentation, but we ran out of time. So we met again on the 21st and just had a very quick show of what it can do, and it can do a lot. There's a lot of potential there. Our next meeting is TBD.
Any questions or comments for finance?
Just to go back to the estimated expenditures and fund balance, just, we're looking pretty good this year. Going for the override has helped us, and we will definitely have more in the fund balance this year, no doubt about it. We're looking much better. That override really helped.
Excellent.
Our bottom line. It didn't solve everything.
No.
But it put us a lot better place than where we were.
Well, that's excellent to hear, and I think once it really becomes clear what the impact of, impact long term on the district's fiscal well-being that override had, and I think it'd be great to try and share that as well. All right, long range planning.
Okay, um, we got together for a workshop. Are we?
That's me. Yeah, I can't be this close, I'm too loud.
We sat down for a three-hour work session with Tom going through forecast five. We put together, like, school districts based on our combined wealth ratio and enrollment across the state. And then we also did a comparison group of Duchess County, so that when we talk about comparative data, we can say, you know, in the county, we look like this comparatively, but with comparative school districts like Haldane and, and other districts around the state, we can also see, hey, you know, they're high wealth districts with low enrollment. How do they, you know, move forward and how are they spending their money? We, then we, we sort of went through a bunch of different data sets, trying to sort of get our arms around what it can do, what it can tell us. Staffing ratios, salaries, all kinds of, of things along those lines, but once, once we got our, our cohorts together, we were running out of time, so we will continue to dig into all that information.
Just a question, because I, I wasn't there. The Duchess County cohort that you looked at, was it all Duchess County schools?
All Duchess Counties, yeah.
Including like the big ones.
Waventures, Marlington, yeah, yeah.
We actually created three peer groups, one Duchess County only, one we did across the state based on combined wealth ratios and enrollment, and we started to create a third one, and it will be kind of a moving one, is who do we think our residents compare ourselves to? Who may not really even, really be comparable, like Spack and Kill. You know, a lot of people compare us to Spack and Kill, but their combined wealth ratios below one. I mean, we're twice as much, we're almost three times as much in our combined wealth ratio than what Spack and Kill is. But other things too, like a lot of times I hear us compared to across the river, New Balls. They're nowhere close to what, coming together with our combined wealth ratio, but so we're starting to put together a list of what, just who people think we are compared to, just to see how we compare to them. One of the things also we did take, spent some time on too, that you didn't mention, was our test scores and things of that nature.
Yeah, that was the answer.
Going to have to get Marvin more involved, because, so he can interpret the data for you.
Right.
I couldn't quite interpret all of that data for you and what it all meant. We could see it, but weren't actually be able to, to address those questions.
But actually, the curriculum, we might want to put that on the agenda soon.
Right, but you're able to follow a cohort of kids over time, which can be very helpful. Sort of see how they're performing.
We do have to be in the afternoon.
Oh, it's tomorrow, should we try to explore a little more with Marvin?
Well, he would have to be available. I don't know what, not available.
All right, okay.
Yeah.
But I don't know what Marvin may, Marvin has access to the program, I just don't know how involved he got into it. Yeah, he may not have played around with it sufficiently.
We wouldn't expect that, yeah.
Probably some of the things that Tom was able to do the last.
One thing we did learn is that, for instance, Antioa would have had much closer profile to ours than they would have realized.
Yeah, they're much, much closer, right? Oh, higher than ours.
Higher even up here.
Higher than we are.
Because they have that, the reservoir.
Well, I don't know if it's so much reservoir, but they're very big land wealthy. I mean, if you look at the size of that district, it's huge compared to the number of kids who are actually in it. It's sort of like us in a way where we got a lot of land wealth with a small population. I think they have the same type of thing. They have, they have a huge land mass, when you take a look at the size of it. Don't know what its value at, but I have to say it's probably land wealthy, but, you know, income poor. I'm not going to say it's so bad, but there are situations in the state where your combined wealth ratio for land is like a four, but your income wealth is a point five. You'll find that up in the Adirondacks, why they'll have these very high combined wealth ratios, you're like, what? They're just so big that they incorporate so much land out there, they just, but the, but the people in the community don't have the money to. They're like, oh, it's.
Any other questions? So it is time for good news. Oh, we had a wonderful audience tonight.
We had a wonderful audience tonight.
That was good news, to see people coming out and participating in what we do and sharing their concerns and their aspirations for this district and for our work together.
Well, I'll, I'll put it out there, I mean, and I always mentioned earlier, but next Monday night, we're having parent academy.
Oh, yes, yes.
So, you know, this is a great opportunity to come meet Bonnie St. James, she's a paraplegic Olympian athlete, who, who's providing this at no cost to the school district. It's, I'm looking very much forward to it, so it's next week, doors open at six o'clock, presentation starts at six thirty. Should be for about two hours. There will be a book available for the first 100 families that come to it. I mean, for parents, it's probably at any age level, that would be great, but if you want to bring your student with you, we kind of highly recommend it's a middle school or high school to talk. Yeah, it's not really, probably be impactful for kids that are in like the elementary schools. I think it may be above their ability, but it's, but it'd be great for the parent there to absorb it and be able to apply her, her methods to, you know, bouncing back. And it's strictly, it's on the anxiety and how to, how to push through it, how she's accomplished it. So it's, we're looking forward to that, and hopefully we'll have a good turnout like we did last year with Screenagers, so.
Yeah, and a great partnership with Arisal.
Yeah. I would also point out that that particular activity, not that it's the only thing we've done or will have done this year, but also meets one of the board's goals.
Yes.
On mental and emotional health.
Can I have an old business?
Yeah, we should probably, we already talked about the coffee with the board, that was on, that was on my list. But we should also talk about the other wrinkle with the capital project.
I was figuring out where that was going to come up. Good places, eh?
That's an old business? Okay.
Would you like to put it someplace else? Well, it is old business, we've been talking about this for the last couple of years, so. Okay, fine.
All right, so was it yesterday, was it two days ago, maybe it was two?
Yesterday.
Yeah, yesterday was Monday.
So yesterday in the morning, we got a call from Richard Michael, who is one of our architects from Techtrac, to, he wanted to have a conference call with me, Joe, and Sheldon in regards to the status of our project. We are number 192 still in the queue. They're only getting through 10 to 15 a week right now.
SED.
SED is. So they're looking, it's at least another 10 weeks, if not 12 weeks, before we would get approval. If we wait that long, just, just nothing's going to happen all this summer.
And remind us again when we submit it to SED.
June 30th of last year.
It's absolutely different.
And, and, you know, I, I, I did have a presentation that wasn't apt, but I was given the presentation afterwards. Really, it's a problem in, at SED. They have many vacancies at, at the project planning, okay? But in one particular area, engineering. They have plenty in many other areas, but in engineering, it's like, I think they're down to one engineer right now to review all the projects, and that's why it's everything's backed up. So I know last time we talked about another option, and that's do the expedited review. On June 30th of last year, it was not available to us.
It's just available.
It just became available, I think, January 1st. So they recommended that we consider doing this expedited review.
They mean the.
Our architects and, and construction manager.
Okay.
So they recently have done this at Spack and Kill. Spack and Kill, I think they did a $20 million project, but they were really concerned about their roofs.
As their roofs are much worse shill.
As their roofs are much worse shored than ours are, so they can't go a couple of years without doing their roofs. They have to do their roofs right away.
They need to get it done now because it's causing damage within the school itself. So they took that part out of the project and put it through the expedited review. It took about four weeks to go through the expedited review. Doesn't get complete right then. They've done their work, then it gets resubmitted back to SED for their final approval.
Supposedly a week.
Yeah, and that's what I say, supposed to be a week. It's only done with them a couple of days. So we should know by Friday whether or not that's a true thing that, that is happening. Now, their thought and the, the cost of doing this expedited review is about $25,000 to $26,000, okay? So that's like, versus going the free route. But if you go the free route, we miss this summer altogether and.
Prices are higher.
Prices are going to be higher next summer and things of that nature. So it kind of gets us wondering. Plus, the further you go out, we believe in speaking with our fund, bond council, that interest rates will be higher too. So the longer this takes and goes, the more it's going to cost to do things. And we may not be able to do everything if that's the case, which I don't want to see happen. And then second of all, when we actually go to borrow the money, if we have to wait a whole nother year, there's the potential that, who knows? It could be 1% higher for all we know. He's hoping it isn't, you know? This economy's moving better, there's no doubt about it. You know, interest rates are starting to go up. But usually municipal bonds don't, all of a sudden, you know, if the Fed goes up 1%, all of a sudden, all the bonds go up 1%. Doesn't, doesn't work that way in public municipality. It doesn't, doesn't equate that way. Like in a lot of places, you see that happen, so. But they would go up. Just, it wouldn't go up as fast as what everything else is, but still, the cost, there's no doubt about it, you know? The longer, the higher your interest rate is going to be, is the more money that will be in the budget, you know? And that's one thing I've tried to avoid.
Who does the expedited review?
Okay, so what would happen is, is that we would have to submit it to, I think it's Anadaga, Madison.
Yeah, it goes through a BOSE.
Not Madison, or is it?
Yeah, I think it's the one that does the Syracuse area.
So it's a BOSE?
It's not the BOSE that does the review. They've dedicated that BOSE to be the, the processor for these expedited reviews.
It's another firm, right?
Yeah, so, yeah, yeah, it's many, it's multiple firms. So like you said, I'm going to submit it to them. They're not going to turn around and send it to Tetra Tech to review it, but they may give us to KGD or.
It's like a peer review.
Exactly. It's kind of like a peer review in a lot of ways.
And who do you write the check to for $25,000?
Don't know yet, to tell you the truth.
Is it, who does the review?
I.
Who gets the BOSE?
I don't know whether it goes through a BOSE and generates aid.
You don't know?
No, I really don't know. I mean, it's a pretty new process.
Okay. Is it a new process, do you think, because they're so jammed up?
Certainly, certainly it is. It's absolutely the reason, you know, these engineers that SED can't hire, they're working for these private firms. Because they're making more money working for the private firms than working for the state education department. That's why they can't hire enough people in their own shop or do this work.
Diane, you have a question?
I have a couple of questions. First of all, I mean, this is outrageous at the state that they do this. It's like, it's unbelievable. And if they don't have the people to do this, then they should pay. We shouldn't have to pay, they should have to pay. I mean, this is, it's, it's like unbelievable. And I feel like, like buying into this, you know, this is just going to encourage them to like keep this as the process. Why should they ever hire anyone if the schools are then going to spend extra money to, to pay outside firms? I mean, I feel like we should let our lawmakers know and see if there's anything they can do. Probably not, but, I mean, this is so like ridiculous that they, that they would put us in this position. It's, so, soapbox aside. So my question is, do you think that the cost of the project being delayed by waiting would be more than the $25,000? Because, you know, we're only talking about maybe a month's difference.
No, I mean, we will completely miss this summer. We would not be able to do anything till the following summer. If we do the expedited review and they turn it around in four to six weeks or whatever, we will go out to bid in, Lou was saying, he was hoping like mid-April. And if we, if we bid it in mid-April, they are, I mean, again, we're still pushing it out, but he feels that there's enough work that we will be able to do this summer. They're going to have to rearrange the schedule of work, but there is work. For example, they're talking about, they could do all the asbestos, asbestos abatement in this building.
The flooring, you know?
And they could bid that out in time to get that work done. In fact, they're, the two of them, Rich and Lou, are meeting with Sheldon this Thursday to like re, re-majigger the, when the work is done.
It's a technical.
That is a technical function.
Engineers use that all the time. Re-majigger the scope of the project to have stuff to do during this summer. Otherwise, if we stay with, in SED and we don't get approval until May, there won't be enough time to bid it out to do work during the summer. So we'll lose the summer.
Are you done with your home?
I'm not, sorry.
Carry on and then we'll go.
So my next question would be, is there any guarantee that it would be four to six weeks? Because if we pay this money and then we miss it anyway.
There's no guarantee. There's no guarantees.
Well, I mean, if we're, basically, we're hiring a third party. We can't say this is when we, I mean.
They're probably getting slammed.
Well, I think one of the things we could ask is of, 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 of Richard would be to contact that BOSE, to find out how many things are in that pipeline versus what's already on the other.
Because everybody ahead of us is thinking we're behind us.
If we see that there's 50 people in front of us and there's only five firms doing it, 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 that may not be a way to go either. But if it is a possibility, and they really do think they can get it through in that amount of time, I would think that's something.
It seems like the only option to some work.
But I don't want to spend $25,000 and still not get through.
Right.
I really think we have no choice but to try to get the project expedited. We can't afford to wait another year.
I agree.
Has construction start, we're going to lose money and, you know, work that we need done. So I don't see that it's, you know, proved for us to just continue down the path that we're going to try to get SED approval. I think it needs to be expedited. My question would be if we, you know, not necessarily on our own, but if we could join those school districts that are in the same boat, if we could litigate to get the state to pay for it.
Good, that's a good.
Oh, go, Jacqueline, you had your end. If we were to take the gamble, not go the route of hiring and expediting the process, maybe it is $25,000 additional cost due to delay for a year, maybe it's less, maybe it's more. It's a gamble, right? But it changes the work order, right? Would we still be able to do anything during the school year? The things that we were going to do during the school year, were they dependent on the summer work that was going to happen? Just put the whole project out of here?
Well, it sort of it is. I mean, because that's one of the discussions they're having on Thursday. What can be done during the school year? Could they go into, on a second shift? Or I don't care, anytime from four o'clock in the afternoon until seven o'clock the next morning, you can work as much as you want, as far as I'm concerned, to be able to do things like lighting, doing the ceilings and the lighting, classroom by classroom by classroom, so that they can do one at night and then go to the next one the next day. Now, now, this is something different now. It will cost more to do things on second shift. There's a bit of a premium to do that. Because they're going to have to pay a premium to their employees to be working at night to do those things. Because typically, they're day workers like us, but.
Weren't we already looking at doing some things during the year?
No.
No, we weren't.
Because the original schedule wouldn't require that. I mean, some of the things.
So no, that we weren't looking to do night work.
There was a couple of things that can be done during the, during the school year, and that was more like the athletic fields, the outside type of thing. And the, also, the idea was, was with the window walls, once we started, we would just take the upper and lower section, do them, move on down, move on down as we go along. But I think they wanted to get a bulk of it out of the way during the summer, so that there was only a couple more panels that needed to be done. Not to do every single one of them, because you got weather constraints too. You don't want to start doing that in November, because you're not going to be able to pick it up again until April or so before it starts to warm up.
But they weren't going to do any of the windows in the first summer?
No, that wasn't until.
Because they don't have the time to fabricate all those windows.
And.
Even if we were, excuse me, even if we were running on the original schedule, they just, they need so much lead time to fabricate that many windows and they're all, you know, cut to size, you know? It's not like going to Williams and pulling a bunch of Anderson windows out of their shutout back. I mean, this, that, that's a big deal. So they weren't going to do those this summer, anyway.
And do the architect, did they say where, like, how they see the additional $25,000 in costs? It feels like a lot for an increase for.
Doesn't make a lot of the contingency.
Yes.
No, I know that we come out of the contingency, right. But I'm saying, how would it go up that much? The cost of materials do go up every year, but by $25,000, I mean, wow.
Well, think about it. You're doing $10 million worth of work.
But not all.
Even a 1% increase is $100,000. Just, just a 1% increase is $100,000. That $25,000, $26,000 is not for materials, it's for the work to, to do the review. There's no materials involved in there at all. I mean, the cost of materials could increase that much or more, or less, you know? That's, that's crapshoot too, but the reason they're charged us that kind of money is, yeah, is to do this labor that SED was going to be doing for free. And in a normal year, they would have done it, but now they're jammed up. Here's another thing that happened.
I wasn't thinking that.
My question is, is it also a gamble that the review will not go in our favor?
Well.
Or is it, is it?
What do you mean not go in our favor?
I mean, like, after they review and they say, I mean, could they potentially find problems and then kick it back down to the guy, to the architects and say, you need to fix X, Y, and Z? And then it gets delayed more.
It's possible.
So that's a part of it is?
Could be, yeah. One of the things I did want to talk with Richard on, on Thursday is the following, because he made a comment like, you know, they have reviewed our stuff, not all of it though. It's that last piece that just, like I said, there's only one engineer to, and that's the biggest part of all of it, is the engineering part. You know, someone's ought to review the fields. That, that's not an issue. Done. It's the interior stuff and things of that nature, is where the engineers get involved, and that's really where the issue is. So I brought up to Tom, and this was a question I thought, and after we had this phone call earlier today, I said, if it's been up at SED for months and they've already done some of the work, if we go to the expedited review process, does it go back to square one? Or do they pick it up from where SED has left off? If it's the latter, then it's not outrageous to think they might be able to get through it in four or five weeks. If they've got to go back to square one, that's a big project, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff in there. I don't know whether. So we're going to, we're going to find that out, so.
And if most of the work is done, is it still that $25,000?
Well, that was kind of our question too. Because supposedly the fee structure is based on the size or the dollar amount of the project. So our $12 million is slotted into, here, this is what, this is what it is. Now, maybe they only need to review $4 million worth of work.
Right.
And then we can get the lower amount and it gets expedited. So those are some of the questions we've come up with after our discussions with them.
But if Spackenkill just didn't.
And the other question?
Just roofs, just two roofs. I mean, that was like, out of the, out of the totality of their project, that roofing piece was just in the ocean.
So when is Facilities going to meet again? Because you guys have all these questions. Lou is meeting with Sheldon on Thursday. It sounds like there's still some moving parts before we can make a real judgment call on this, right? So can it get to Facilities anytime? I don't know when your next meeting is.
The 19th, yeah. We don't want to wait that long.
Well, let's reschedule.
We need to fast track a meeting with Facilities Committee.
It would be helpful if, you know, all that information could be gathered and you guys could.
It's on the 22nd of March, sorry. It's like in April.
Just the last, if, if they do kick it back, there's a problem, is there an additional fee for that? So add that to your question list. Was that included in the?
No, it's included in the overall.
Okay. So we will, we will confer, members of Facilities will confer about meeting with, who would like to appoint the next board meeting.
I would say we may need to do it either later this week or beginning next week, because they made the point, the longer we delay, now, we're losing, you know, the time is valuable and even losing a couple of weeks is not good. So we may have to.
So you confer and then get back to us and we'll try to do it right away?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Is there any other old business?
Uh.
There's a lot of.
There's a lot of business.
Public comments?
No, I'm just learning.
Sorry.
I will say that for the, I know you sort of closed this already, but for the coffee, I think from, I agree with, can't read your name, Jacqueline?
Jacqueline's over there.
That you, you might consider finding a way, I know it's impossible, but finding a way to cohesively pull it where the major factors are. Because I have a feeling that at the coffee, a lot of people are going to come in, having heard things and looking at that paperwork, not going to, they're not going to be able to make educated commentary just looking at those numbers. So if there's any way to take those numbers and really, not, not dumb it down, but simplify it so that people can be educated and their reactions will be legitimate, given our looking at it.
Excellent, Jessica, can you tell us who you are?
Oh, I'm Katie. I'm a parent.
You're just a, you are a proud parent.
A proud parent.
Thank you very much for being here tonight. All right.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for being here. Other?
I don't have any others. Nope.
Just, I'm going to be away in the next meeting.
Next board meeting, the March 13th or?
Yeah.
Okay. Whitney, did you make it on that? Okay. Do you want, you want us to hold your board packet for that meeting?
Um, yes.
I mean, unless there's somebody going to be. I wouldn't want to leave it out in front of your house, you know what I'm saying?
I'll be home on Friday, but we're leaving Sunday, so.
So you can drop your packet.
So we can drop it? Okay, just you were being to me.
All right, so let's move on to our action items. Is there anyone who wishes to remove any item from the consent agenda? We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Six in favor? That motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve additional spring coaches for the 2017-18 school year. JV bat baseball, William Morrissey, $2,837. JV softball, TBA, $2,837. Varsity track, throwing and pullbald, TBA, $4,032. Modified track, distance throwing, TBA, $2,478. Novice crew, Evan Russell, $3,136.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency, additional substitute, non-instructional staff for the 2017-18. the 2017-18 school year.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of additional enrichment program advisors for Chancellor Livingston Elementary School for the 2017-18 school year. See attached.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a modification to the leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act from Kristen Seacor to commence on or about February 26th, 2018, with such leave to be taken as paid medical leave through the period of disability as certified by physician in writing through April 16th, 2018 or thereabouts, to the extent of her current sick leave, and thereafter, such leave to be taken as unpaid childcare leave through June 20th, 2018.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the modification of the appointment of Kelly Levine as a long-term substitute in the position of elementary teacher at the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, effective on or about February 26th, 2018 through June 20th, 2018, at the pleasure of the board, at the rate of Step 1 MA, $58,482 prorated, in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2016-17. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the leave of absence granted to Kristen Seacor, elementary teacher at the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the resolution directing the district clerk to give notice of the annual school district public hearing on the budget, the annual school district election, and the vote on the school budget. See attached.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Christine Martin to provide teacher aid services for approximately 2.5 hours per day for each day of varsity track and field practices, and/or for home means as necessary and appropriate, effective for the 2017-18 varsity cross-country season starting on or about March 5th, 2018, in accordance with the 2017-18 ANY salary schedule.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the following award from the Rhinebeck Parent Teacher Student Organization, PTSO, in the total amount of $1,765 as follows. Six-week extracurricular program for BMS students on improv acting led by Denny Dillon, submitted by John Kemenzer, in the amount of $400 as stipulated. Transportation from BMS students to various locations during the 2017-18 BMS Week of Discovery, submitted by Henry Frishkeneck, in the amount of $1,365 as stipulated.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve non-human salaries for 2017-18, see attached.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I moved a table, just so we can clarify the chart.
Okay, there's been a motion to table, we have a second to that.
Second.
All those in favor of tabling? Okay, that motion's been tabled. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following permanent civil service appointments. Kara Kepler, teacher aide, effective March 7th, 2018. Kelly Mahoney-Dussant, teacher aide, effective March 7th, 2018. Terri Secula, health aide, effective March 6th, 2018. Dawn McNamara, monitor, effective March 6th, 2018. Elizabeth Romero, food service worker, effective March 7th, 2018. Anne Marie Asher, food service worker, effective March 7th, 2018. Brendan O'Hara, microcomputer tech, effective February 28th, 2018. Ralph Chaneze, teacher aide, effective March 7th, 2018.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Tina...
Michael.
Michael Luke, teacher aide for the purpose of retirement as stated, effective the close of business on June 29th, 2018.
So, move.
Second.
Name is Michael, for her service, for years of service. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the following grant award from the Min Hudson Teacher Center in the total amount of $1,740 as follows. Book study on standards-based grading, submitted by Bobby Vee in the amount of $1,740 as stipulated.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? We're delighted to see such grants coming into the district. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to move into proposed executive session for the purpose of discussing...
Here it says...
Specific individuals?
Specific individuals and unit salaries.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, we are moving into executive session.